Stuart Weiss. The time is now 7:09. I'm going to call the April 7, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Roll call Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Aye, present.
Alderman Donaldworth. Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Mayor Taylor. So, I need a motion to seat Alderman Edith Newsom as Chair Pro Tem Mayor for the April 7, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Was that you?
Alderman Turner, motion.
Second.
Who's second?
Alderman Hayes.
Hayes, thank you. All right, all those vote in favor, say aye.
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 No? Motion carries. Alderman Newsom.
Dr. Kell Kelly. Item B, invocation by Apostle Dr. Ernest Taylor of Ministry of Word of Life Ministries International, and then after that, we will have the pledge.
Before we start, can we put, I'll put a motion to seat Alderman Donaldworth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I apologize Pastor, you can go ahead.
Pastor, you can.
Eternal God, our Heavenly Father, it's once again in the name of Jesus we come. And we come to you Heavenly Father as humble as we know how. You said that when the wicked rule, the people mourn, but when the righteous rule, the people rejoice. And we come Heavenly Father seeking your face because it is our intentions that the people in this entire world rejoice. If there was ever a time that we needed you, that time is now. We need you Heavenly Father to step in and to take control over the things that are going on in this world now. Lord God, we're coming against things that you said in your word that were ungodly. We don't accept and we go against bigotry, we go against hatred, we go against division. You came and died to bring us together, and you said by this man will know that ye are my disciples because you have love one for another. Lord, we're releasing that love in this place right now. We're releasing that love into this world right now, in the name of Jesus. We pray a special blessing upon each and every person that is here, that is present, everyone that is on the council. We're asking for your godly wisdom, we're asking for your godly direction, and we thank you in the name of your son Jesus, amen.
Can we all sit?
In the name of Jesus, America, and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, in the visible, in the liberty and justice of this world.
Thank you all for coming this evening. The mayor, in her absence, I will read the mayor's comments. Happy spring, I am thrilled that warmer days and outdoor activities are just around the corner. A big thank you to everyone who has made the most of the last few mild winter days to tidy up your yards, parkways, and surrounding neighborhoods. Your efforts in keeping Waukegan clean are truly appreciated. April, the month of April, is officially Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Waukegan, and nationally. Next National Community Development Week will be April 21 through the 25th. The CDBG department will be hosting a week full of events and presentations highlighting the accomplishments of CDBG programs. To get involved or for more information, please contact our CDBG department at 847-599-2530. Waukegan liquor license renewal applications are due this month on Tuesday, April 15. The Waukegan Finance Department is working to close out their fiscal year 25, '26. They're still waiting for 84 of the 120 liquor license holders to respond to the correspondence. Failure to comply will result in the loss of a liquor license and any other associated licensing such as video gaming. For more information, contact WK Accounts Receivable at 1-860-0334. Just a quick reminder that the deadline to get your 2025 stickers, there's the city stickers for your cars, are April 30. To steer clear of those long lines and hefty fines, it's best that you get your stickers early. The Waukegan Police, excuse me, the Waukegan Police Traffic Bureau will have special hours on Saturday, April 26, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon for those last minute purchases. You can also find passenger and truck stickers at most currency exchanges in Waukegan. But keep in mind, keep in mind that there's an extra convenience fee, and they can't apply your discounts for senior citizens, those with physical disabilities, or active military. So if you need to get those type of city stickers, you need to get to the, down here to City Hall and get those. Earth Day is just around the corner, and the city of Waukegan, along with the Waukegan Public Works and the nine Aldermen are gearing up for Earth Week. From Monday, April 21 to Friday, April 25, there will be a collection point set up across the city where residents can drop off non-hazardous items. This service is completely free for residents, so it's a great chance to do some spring cleaning at your home. Feel free to join in on any of the collection days regardless of which ward you live in. You can find all details about the dates and locations on the city websites at waukeganil.gov, or on social media pages, or you can always contact your Alderman. There are several community-driven cleanup events coming up. Join us for the Downtown Waukegan Cleanup on Sunday, April 13, that's this Sunday at 11:00 a.m. Then on Saturday, April 26, we have two cleanups, one at the harbor from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and another at the Waukegan Beach from 10:00 a.m. till noon. Also, don't miss the Recycle Your Tech event on Tuesday, April 29, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in City Parking Lot D, located at the corner of West Clayton Street and North Sherden Road. This event is a collaboration between Lake County and the city of Waukegan. We encourage everyone to pitch in and help enhance the beauty of your neighborhoods, parks, streets, and popular spots. If your organization, your church, or your club is planning any Earth Day activities, please reach out to our PR department at 847-599-2525, so we can add your event to our calendar and spread the word. Also, to share that there will be a yard waste spring cleanup organized by the city of Waukegan and LRS starting on Monday, April 21, 2025, and lasts for two weeks. During this time, you can put out an unlimited number of residential yard waste bags and designated yard waste cans, each weighing no more than 50 pounds, without needing any stickers. Yard waste or landscape waste includes organic materials from maintaining gardens, lawns, trees, and shrubs. However, please note that items like sod, dirt, artificial Christmas trees, reefs, garland, and food scraps will not be accepted. For more details, feel free to reach out to LRS at 844-633-3577. Those are the mayor's comments. Next is Resolutions, Item 2, Resolutions, Proclamations, Presentations, and Appointments. Item A, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The proclamation for the Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day, and on Friday, we raised the Armenian flag and the proclamation was read at that time. So I will continue to the next one, where I believe we have some people here from the library. It is the proclamation, Public Library and Library Workers' Recognition Week in Waukegan, April 6 through the 12, 2025. Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions, no matter where they are on life's journey; and whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socio-economic status; and whereas libraries and library workers adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve; and whereas libraries and library workers are accessible and foster inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals; and whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations; and whereas library workers champion our youth, they foster creativity and a wealth of diverse opportunities for growth. Not only do they create projects and inspiration for our community, they are created with enthusiasm. And whereas library workers continuously utilize the latest technologies to make information, books, and resources more accessible, their knowledge and ability bring valuable tools directly to persons that might otherwise go without. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week and National Library Workers' Day. And now therefore be it resolved, be it that Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 6 through the 12, 2025, City of Waukegan Public Library and Library Workers' Recognition Week, and encourage all residents to visit their library and celebrate the adventures, opportunities, and people that make it possible to be unlocked for us every day, adopted the 7th day of April, 2025. Madam Chair? Do you want to say a few words?
She says she's going to do that.
Our second proclamation is National Public Safety Telecommun- Telecommunicators Week is April 13 through the 19, 2025. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services; and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of public, of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property; and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the emergency communication center; and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services; and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety; and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the city of Waukegan have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients; and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13 through 19, 2025, to be the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Waukegan, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, adopted the 7th day of April, 2025. Mr. Tom Perfect?
This award is really for them, not me. They're the ones that do the job every day. I am proud to lead this team. We have a great set of dispatchers. I thank this administration, this council, for stepping up and recognizing the need for a new dispatch center and, you know, keeping us here in Waukegan and not sending us to another outside agency. So, thank you, and these are the ones that answer your calls when you call 911, and we have some of the buzz. Thanks, guys.
Okay, Madam Chair, our last resolution proclamation presentation is in recognition of the 2024-2025 Waukegan Boys Varsity Basketball Team. We are presenting to all of those participants from the school, a Waukegan Proud Award for being a member of the 24-25 Waukegan Boys Varsity Basketball Team and the IHSA Regional Champions for the North Suburban Conference, presented today, April 7, 2025. And now, Madam Chair is going to read the names, and I think she's got a relation.
First of all, congratulations Bulldogs. You had an awesome season, and I was happy to be able to witness most of your games at home and away. You all are exceptional players, and I pray that you move on to, well, most of you, I think that are here, will be back next year. So I'm looking for great things from you all. I'm going to call up the coaches first, and then y'all can help me with some of the names. Coach Aslaw. And Ronzel Newsom, y'all hear the same last name. And Coach KT.
So I'll just go down the list here, but first I just want to say thanks for having us here tonight. It's a great honor to be presented here in front of the city council. Thank you all for the invitation, we appreciate it. Exciting group, we got seniors that are on their way to brilliant things after our program, and we have a bunch of returning guys. So I promise you'll have a few more home games in December, so we can get train rolling a little bit earlier next year. Just the nature of our schedule last year, we were on the road a lot, but we will get some home games for sure in December, so we can get you guys out to see next year's version of the squad. But for this year's version of the squad, I'm just going to read all the names. We had a few guys that could not be here tonight. They did not have school today, so rallying the troops was a little bit tricky, and some guys have already moved on. If you're plugged into the sports scene, AAU season has started hot and heavy, so some guys had practices, they had games out of town. But I'll just go through the whole list of the squad here, starting with number zero, Carter Newsom. Number one, DJ Brown, not here today. Number two, Trey Roberts. Number three, Rico Love. Number four, On The Mend, Samarian Carter. Number five, Zavi Granville. Number 11, Adrian Serrano. Number 12, Cameron McKay. Number 15, Timothy Gravy. Number 21, Miles Furlough. Number 24, DJ Cole. Number 31, Darian Pope. Number 20, Jeffrey Leonard. Number 22, Ivan An. Number 14, Sequins Frye. Number 33, The Principal's Kid, Michael Hill. Number 34, Jerry Harris. And number 20, Doug Lewis. I'll just, if I can, read the coaches' names on our coaching staff. We have the best coaching staff in the state of Illinois. The majority of our coaching staff are alumni of the high school, and a majority of our coaching staff are alumni basketball players of the high school, something that we're all very proud of. I'm sorry, assistant coaches to my left here, Ronzel Newsom. The guy that comes with the bricks, John KT Reeves. GK Gardner. Stephen Connor, Quan Connor, more known as. Alex Cockemo. And barely out of high school himself, and now on our coaching staff, Ethan Rodriguez. Our lower-level coaching staff, Thomas Coleman. Angel Melendez. And Ruben Alvarado. Our team mom and do everything for everybody, Miss Robert O'Reilly, come on up. Our scorekeeper, Jeff Davis. Our athletic trainer, James Lee, who's on the clock right now, back at school doing something, I'm sure. And then our manager crew, which is one of the best we've ever had, Chester Dancy, Manny Shigoya, Shai Tiller, and AJ Harvey. So, and thank you all for your support, we appreciate you, we're looking forward to bigger and better things and getting this basketball program really rolling again. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you very much. So we are now moving on to audience time. You'll have three minutes. I'm going to call up the first group, go ahead and go to the east side of the room, line up, be ready for your time. You have three minutes. I have Miriam Arguete, Rayon Edwards, Jennifer Cardova, and Brother Blanks. Miriam Arguete, Rayon Edwards, Jennifer Cardova, and Brother Blanks. Ready when you are, ma'am. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Miriam Jeanette Argueta, Built to Empower Corporation. Elder persons and madam committee leader. With a busy hub such as Grand Tequila Bar and Grill, Grand Liquors, and Labodega, any property within Pine Street has to know that what comes with the territory. In addition, if I am correct, there are five residences out of the street made up of many that are placing complaints against a business who is making an effort to assuage both the clients and the neighbors. Today I stand in solidarity with Labodega, a small business thriving in Waukegan, Illinois. Thank you.
Thank you. Rayon Edwards, sorry.
Good evening, council. Hey, y'all, we free at last, baby. I waited a long time to get here to say this, y'all. Things is going to be different, finally. Now I'm going to ask this council to do something tonight. We know that every administration that comes in, do what they do. We watch it on the f-.
Number 22, Ivan An. Number 14, Sequins Frye. Number 33, the principal's kid, Michael Hill. Number 34, Jerry Harris. And number 20, Doug Lewis. I'll just, if I can, read the coaches' names on our coaching staff. We have the best coaching staff in the state of Illinois. The majority of our coaching staff are alumni of the high school, and a majority of our coaching staff are alumni basketball players of the high school, something that we're all very proud of. I'm sorry, assistant coaches to my left here, Ronzel Newsome. The guy that comes with the bricks, John KT Reeves. GK Gardner. Stephen Connor, Juan Connor, more known as. Alex Cockemo. And barely out of high school himself, and now on our coaching staff, Ethan Rodriguez. Our lower-level coaching staff, Thomas Coleman. Angel Melendez. And Ruben Alvarado. Our team mom and do everything for everybody, Ms. Robert O'Reilly, come on up. Our scorekeeper, Jeff Davis. Our athletic trainer, James Lee, who's on the clock right now, back at school doing something, I'm sure. And then our manager crew, which is one of the best we've ever had, Chester Dancy, Manny Shigoya, Shai Tiller, and AJ Harvey. So thank you all for your support. We appreciate you. We're looking forward to bigger and better things and getting this basketball program really rolling again. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. So we are now moving on to audience time. You'll have three minutes. I'm going to call up the first group. Go ahead and go to the east side of the room. Line up, be ready for your time. You have three minutes. I have Miriam Arguete, Rayon Edwards, Jennifer Cardova, and Brother Blanks. Miriam Arguete, Rayon Edwards, Jennifer Cardova, and Brother Blanks. Ready when you are, ma'am. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Miriam Jeanette Argueta, Built to Empower Corporation, elder persons and madam committee leader. With a busy hub such as Grand Tequila Bar and Grill, Grand Liquors, and Labodega, any property within Pine Street has to know that what comes with the territory. In addition, if I am correct, there are five residences out of the street made up of many that are placing complaints against a business who is making an effort to assuage both the clients and the neighbors. Today, I stand in solidarity with Labodega, a small business thriving in Waukegan, Illinois. Thank you.
Rayon Edwards, sorry.
Good evening, council. Hey, y'all, we free at last, baby. I waited a long time to get here to say this, y'all. Things is going to be different, finally. Now, I'm going to ask this council to do something tonight. We know that every administration that comes in do what they do. We watch it on a federal level, state level, and the local level. I hope we don't start setting precedents and start doing things before the new administration comes in. Let them figure things out. I hope this was a lesson, too. That using color as a front is disgusting. I'm so sorry the mayor's not here tonight. It's not to hire that man for chief of staff. She didn't listen to me, and it was detrimental to her being re-elected to this seat. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you, Alderman Keith Turner, you and Mr. Beatty. You guys ran, and you helped us out. I'm grateful. I know simple math, so thank you, sir. And I hope you don't run again. We don't want you to mayor of the city. You sit up at this council, and you talk about traffic, and you've got most eating tickets than average person sitting in this audience. You can't talk about that. You can't preach that to us. One of the ways to lead is by lead by example, and you have failed at that. I hope when this new administration come in that we get some act right. Victor, we don't like you. The grandstanding, the keeping us here late, the thinking that you know everything, it's disgusting, bro. You a new Alderman. You ain't learned nothing, but you sit up here like you know more than everybody up here, bro. That's not popular amongst the people. I just thought I'd share that with you. That's at least what they saying on social media. I think you new Aldermen should have took a page. You got a beautiful lady that's been sitting up there for a very long time that know the history of this city. She show all of y'all something. She sit in silence. She don't fret with the mess. Talk to her. Learn some from her. Ask her to show you something. Don't be prideful to learn from your counterpart. She know it better than y'all. And before I close, to two of my favorite Aldermen, I know the results may not have been appeasing, but I hope going forward, we can find some way to work together to move this city. Right? It ain't about who we like, it's about all of these people that live in the city. So I wish all y'all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Jennifer Cardova.
Good evening. On behalf of the Waukegan Public Library Staff and Board of Trustees, we truly appreciate the National Library Week proclamation and recognition. We'd love to invite the community to three really exciting events coming up this week that were being led, are being led currently, right now, by our wonderful communications and community engagement coordinator, Jennifer Cardova, and I'll let her tell you all about them.
Thank you. This Wednesday, we hope you can all join us, our library board of trustees. We even have one present here today, is doing a meet and greet for the whole community in Waukegan. Join our library trustees, share your ideas, hear updates on our youth remodel, our new Makerspace, and future plans. This Thursday, Culvers in Waukegan on Waukegan Road is hosting a fundraiser for us, and proceeds go to the library. That's this Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Culvers in Waukegan on Waukegan Road. And then this Saturday, we hope you can all join us. It's going to be a really good time. From 6:00 to 10:00, the library's foundation is having its annual fundraiser here at the Waukegan Public Library. The fundraiser will include food, agave spirits tasting, a live DJ who might be here in the audience, raffle baskets, and a free Makerspace item demo, all for just $25. All proceeds support the Waukegan Public Library and all the improvements to come. We hope to see you there, and thank you so much, and happy National Library Week.
Thank you. Thank you. Brother Blanks.
It's National Library Week, and it's also National Poetry Month, and in honor of National Poetry Month, I'll keep it short. Freedom mine, and those once lost and left behind shall come forth in time. It's in honor of National Poetry Month. But to the subject at hand and the reason I'm here is, in the spirit of accountability. You know, this particular administration under Mayor Taylor, if it was all about Black Abolition Movement for the Mind and Brother Blanks, I would say, under this administration, more than any other administration, our organization, as well as myself, has been recognized for our efforts in this city. And I would have to extend definitely some of that gratitude, initially beginning with our first ward, Alderman Sylvia Bolton, who was the first one to recognize us under this administration. Thank you, Alderman Bolton. But it's not about, I'm not here today, this is not about Brother Blanks and Black Abolition Movement for the Mind, because the one thing that I would say to the mayor, if she was seated there, is you don't pat me on the shoulder with papers, but do not do the accountability in my South Side Ward. What I see right now on McAllister Avenue, and I hope going forward that, and it's been said, that it was going to be repaved this year, but there's a whole lot of things that sometimes get said that don't get done, but I'm really hoping, in the best interest of what our first ward looked like now, with that main vein of McAllister Avenue looked like, there has to be some real accountability, because unfortunately, under this administration, it moved and it descended into the area of the city of no real accountability. So guys, going forward, you got to do better, particularly in our first ward community. I had to come down to the city council chambers and actually had to put it on the floor to get access to the engineering specs for McAllister Avenue, after asking and putting in FOIA requests for those engineering specs all summer. No one should have to come down to the city council floor to get what they should naturally have. I put it on the floor to get access to those engineering specs, and within an hour after me speaking, coming here, I got the specs emailed to me, which is shouldn't have never had to take that. So in the spirit of truth, you guys make sure, moving forward, we have a city, or some real accountability, and to make sure no citizens have to come down here to get what we are rightfully entitled to and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next group will be Esther Heron, Jack Die, Edwin Lagunaz, and Steve Hill.
Hello, everyone. It's great to be back at the Waukegan City Hall meeting after COVID. In Venezuela, I worked as an architect, and I continue working in the United States as an architectural consultant. Being a pedestrian has been important to me. It gives me the feeling of freedom and a connection to the city. And also, I am concerned about how cities are planned. Today, I want to talk about a topic related to this part of myself. It's disappointing for me to see sidewalks and streets in Waukegan covered with rough asphalt patches, while some car crossings are decorated with designs sidewalks seem forgotten. Shouldn't be the other way around. Streets can stay simple, but sidewalks need better care. This situation raises some question. Who did this bad work? How much of taxpayer money was spent on it? Even worse, if we want to fix this problem, we'll mean spending more, which is not fair to residents. What was the reason behind this decision? If the goal is to bring new businesses and visitors to Waukegan, we need actions to match this goal. Right now, the condition, our sidewalks, is embarrassing for residents and visitors. Sidewalk with bad quality has been associated with lower neighborhood socioeconomic status, sorry. It could even throw away businesses, investors from coming to Waukegan. Do you think this kind of work makes Waukegan nice? I think it's the opposite. Even worse, these black bumpy areas are dangerous for anyone walking over them. Around the United States, new laws are being reviewed to make cities accountable for accident and injuries by unsafe conditions. Waukegan should aim to meet high standards, not only to look nice, but to be safe as well. I believe we should follow the golden rule and treat others in the way we want to be treated. I would like to ask you, do you want bumpy back patches on the pathways outside your homes or on the walkways leading to your front door? I believe every city board should have an architect, and the president of the association architects agree. If city leaders don't have training in architecture or planning, they should consult experts, showing care for the people who live in their cities, in this case, Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Die.
I'm Jack Die, and I'm speaking as a private citizen, not as a Waukegan Port District chairman. The following are my personal statements regarding attacks to my wife and I through public comments and a letter sent to residents of Waukegan. The letter was sent from the Waukegan Township Democratic Party and paid for by the Cunningham Campaign Committee. It is my belief that the letter created, was created through falsely discredit Mayor Taylor by association. The statements regarding the Port District will be addressed as appropriate at the next Port Board meeting. My wife and I have been personally attacked by accusations of spreading privileged information and stating that I lack character. Neither of us were running for any office, and all the allegations are heinously false. There have been no documented statements as to what was allegedly said, when, and to whom. I was invited to a meeting with the mayor, and Second Ward Aldermen discussed the matter. That meeting was canceled 15 minutes prior by the Second Ward Aldermen with no rescheduling offer. I have contacted the city on multiple occasions requesting a copy of the complaint and have never received any information, as nothing seems to have officially been filed, to my knowledge. I will not allow anyone to slander my wife nor call into question our character. You crossed the line lying about my wife and I. Waukegan deserves to know about your lack of character and your unethical actions. The Second Ward Aldermen has owned one property since 2020 in Lake County, and that includes an $8,000 general homestead exemption. This exemption is only for a principal residence of the owner and can only be claimed on one property. Secondly, September 27, 2022, before his election, his alderman, Jose Guzman, filed a statement of change form with the state of Illinois for himself as a registered agent of his company to the address he purchased in 2020. Every filing sent is shown the exact same address. The addresses on the official forms were affirmed under penalties of perjury that the facts stated are true and correct. Why should the citizens of Waukegan, the city council, and I care about this? It's because the address is in the seventh ward of Waukegan, not the second. He claimed to live in the second ward, but his documents filed with the state and county say his principal address is in the seventh ward. Either Jose is lying to the state of Illinois and Lake County about his address, receives a general homestead exemption they shouldn't have, or he's lying to the city of Waukegan, especially the citizens of the second ward, about his actual primary residence. This is the person who is falsely accusing me of lacking character and unethical conduct. All this information is on public governmental websites. I request the city to investigate the unethical conduct of Jose Guzman, determine his actual primary residence, and review the legality of him being the second ward alderman. I will make myself available to discuss any allegations against me if and when there's an actual complaint filed against me. I have nothing to hide. I have never disclosed any privileged information despite Jose's false claims. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Edwin Lagunaz.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak in front of you once again. Last time, I addressed the situation that we are currently in and where we went wrong, but the purpose of today is to focus on the future and how we can move forward together successfully. To introduce myself and my wife, this is my wife, Maria Garcia, and my name is Edwin Lagunaz, son of Jorge Lagunaz, owner of Toluca's Restaurant, a family-owned restaurant and staple to the Latino community of Waukegan for more than 20 years. The success of the family's ability to contribute to the community extends beyond Toluca's, but could also be seen through the direction in which La Cantina was headed. We believe that it is crucial for businesses like these to be part of the community, to create space for residents to socialize online and support one another. In a time when the sense of community is more important than ever, having a well-maintained and responsible establishment that fosters belonging is invaluable. Allowing us the opportunity to reopen the bar is the opportunity to reopen the bar is saying yes to a space where neighbors connect, local artists perform, cultural events take place, and the community strains things by coming together. A bar like La Cantina has attracted local visitors and created opportunity for them to come see and experience our city. Beyond the social benefits, reopening La Cantina will have a substantial positive impact in our economy. As a small business, we are able to provide employment opportunities that not only provide a livelihood, but also contribute to the economic health of Waukegan. The foot traffic credit extends to surrounding businesses when people come and spend their money in the area, making it a win-win situation for the entire community. We understand the importance of operating a responsible and safe establishment and can assure you that, that should the opportunity be granted, we will continue to take all necessary measures to ensure compliance with the local laws and regulations. As previously mentioned, I have extensive experience in managing, and my wife as well, and the business. This includes proper training for staff serving alcohol responsibly and protocols enforced by the security to ensure the safety of everyone who walks through the doors. We strictly enforce ID checks and limited alcohol consumption to ensure no one is overserved. We are open and welcome to collaborating with our law enforcement and security to continue to ensure the safety of those who come to La Cantina. We appreciate your time and consideration, and ask you that you support the opportunity of reopening La Cantina and obtaining a liquor license, as this endeavor will not only create social but economic benefits for the opportunity. Thank you to all, and for Mr. George Bridges for helping us throughout the process.
Thank you, sir. The next three will be Stephen Hill, Robert Rotaca, and Margaret Carrasco. Stephen Hill.
All right. Mr. Robert Rotaca.
Robert Rotaca, on behalf of Toluca's, and that being Edwin Lagunaz. The last time that I was here, I indicated in front of the council that there is a pending application for their liquor license. And when there is a pending application for the liquor license, Mr. Bridges told me, lied to my face, and said, April 7, they'll have a decision. That application's been pending for six months. I wrote him a letter reciting the conversation that we had. Within five minutes, I get a letter from Marcus Martinez that's signed by Ann Taylor indicating that there's a denial of the liquor license based on a 2019 offense. Now, when you have a 2019 offense, they're indicating it's a conviction. I went and looked at it. It's a supervision, and I could go into my criminal background and explain to you what a conviction is, but I'm telling you, there has never been any grounds based on Toluca's or Edwin Lagunaz prior from other administrations or this one indicating that he cannot have a liquor license based on that supervision. Mr. Weiss, I appreciate you coming and talking to me, but again, Toluca's is here, and they're going to keep on coming, and they're going to keep on being here until there is some due process for them to have a liquor license. Again, this started as an occupancy permit, and now it's going into background checks. I've had the opportunity, over the course of the last five or six years when I do criminal law, there's been liquor licenses given to the lounge down here, where there was over 100 or 200 shots fired that affected CLC. There is no type of violence or any nuisance when it comes to Toluca's. I'm asking you, the board, to please consider their application and grant them the ability to have their liquor license. Due process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Margaret Carrasco.
Does anyone know what this is? Exactly. This is a pickleball panel, okay? And the reason why I brought it today is because according to many residents who are members of the Waukegan Park District Field House, they allege that Waukegan Chief of Staff George Bridges is allegedly misusing his work hours, collecting payroll taxpayers' monies, and instead spending hours at the field house playing pickleball. Okay? This is categorized as time card theft and fraud, and there's a video to prove it. Next. I request that the check request from George Bridges that he's demanding for an additional $12,000 not be paid. It's illegal. It was never voted on before he did the work. Three. For those that don't know, George Bridges is Second Ward Alderman Victor Felix's mentor, okay? He meets with him from- He meets with him privately quite frequently. The word on the streets of Waukegan, boy do they talk, is that Victor is scheming with Bridges allegedly to give him a huge contract for him to remain employed with the city of Waukegan on payroll, increase his retirement for thousands and thousands of dollars. With that, I am doing a move-on petition because if there's something very, very clear in the city of Waukegan, get George Bridges out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, that concludes the audience portion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we're going to move on to item four, the consent agenda. Can I get a motion on the floor?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Martinez. Are there any questions to any of these items?
Right here.
Pull out or whatever. Alderman Guzman?
C and E, please.
C?
Andy?
I'd like to pull out.
Item C and E?
E? As in Edward?
Are there any other questions? I need to read these out. C and E. All right. Motion, item A, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, March 17, 2025. Item B, motion to approve and ratify regular payroll dated March 21, 2025 in a total amount of $2,917.56. Item D, motion to approve and ratify regular payroll dated April 4, 2025 in the total amount of $2,038,74.95. Item F, motion to approve vendor payments dated April 7, 2025 totaling in the amount of $3,101,691.35. Are there any questions to these items? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
All right, item C.
Actually, Alderman or Mayor Proton, C and E are basically the same thing, the same questions. I mean, you have here, okay, so part of it I don't have a problem.
Don't we need a motion first?
First, item C.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Florian, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Guzman.
Yes. So my question is this, same thing for C and E, I have the same questions. I understand the safety shoes, tools, and uniform allowance, but retro pay is on both C and E. And then my concerns is what are final payouts? And then...
So what's the concern?
Final payouts and then retro pay is on both C and E.
Is the chief back there?
So why, who's, why are we giving retro pay and what are final payouts?
Alderman.
Do we have someone from Finance up here who could, or Payroll, who could come up and explain the two items that are up on the agenda?
Yeah, because this is like $200,000.
We've got Sherry coming up, she can explain, hopefully.
Sounds great, thank you.
Item C, Sherry, on the consent agenda. The question is regarding retro pay and final payouts. What is, what is that?
So retro pay is when an employee gets like a step increase, but it's missed on a payroll, so we have to go back and fix it on the next payroll. And then a final payout is when...
Can you push the microphone forward?
Can you hear me now?
I think Ron has it all the way forward.
Can you hear me now? Okay. And a final payout is when an employee separates service, separates employment with the city, they are eligible for certain banks based on their collective bargaining agreements. So we cash them out.
Alderman Guzman, were you wondering why there are two, why this appears twice on the agenda?
Correct.
So there's a, there's a 32125 miscellaneous payroll and then a 44 miscellaneous payroll.
Right.
I think that's just the question, why there, why there are two separate agenda items on the consent agenda?
Because it's two separate payrolls. So there was three weeks between the last council and this one. So the March 21st payroll was after the first council we just had in March, or the third one, I mean.
So how many employees resigned between, in three weeks? I mean, that's what you're saying, right? Final payout.
Well, miscellaneous payroll consists of several items. So there's police holiday buyback, comp time, if there's any union, uniform allowances that we have to give them, and then retros. It could be one person, it could be two, it all depends. So it's, I don't know who left during those times, I don't have that.
Normally, this would, one of these would appear on every council agenda and they always do, but because there was an increased period of time between the two meetings, there, two of these occurred, two of these reports occurred. So that, that's why this happens, this is popping up twice.
All right, so nobody got a raise and then retro pay, right? Or how many people got raises and now the retro pay?
Everyone gets a raise every year.
I understand that.
And they got different times that they get raises.
That's not the reason for the retro pay. I think Alderman Newsom, in retrospect, right?
All right.
Is that accurate, Alderman?
Retro pay is you're getting paid, like she said, you're getting paid after, right? And it's now hitting the payroll.
Okay. All right.
Can we vote on this?
May I? No.
Item C, we have a motion by Alderman Florian and Alderman Guzman. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you. Item E, can I get a motion?
So moved.
I second.
Motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Bolton. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Guzman pulled it out.
Yes. Go ahead, go ahead, Alderman Turner.
You okay?
Well, same thing, a retro pay and then you have bonus pay and it's just...
All right, I have a question.
I don't know, it should have been more specific on the board docs and it should've said what it, what it was for.
Is this stipend for like any department heads or anything like that or?
So, so in general, this report is that you get, you have your normal payroll, which should be a constant for every, but then there are instances, whether it be buybacks from, from personal time allowances or other things, there are times when we pay employees a small increment more or some increment more, and that's what, this happens every month, that some increment more is paid to a whole list of it. And if you, do you guys have the, the actual reports on board docs that show?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it shows, I think there's, they're about each three pages and they probably have got about 30 different employees on each page, so.
Mostly police and fire.
Thank you.
All right, if I may.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you very much. All right, so I went, I've received several phone calls regards the final line item for Mr. Bridges and the check issued in the amount of $12,384.51. And it's my understanding, so I'm asking for clarification, I'm not making any accusations, I'm asking for clarification. If I'm wrong, just state that as likely to do. So my understanding is that Mr. Bridges is being compensated for work done in his role as interim building commissioner. And the problem I would have with that, if that's the case, I don't know, I'm asking a question. If that's the case, I would have this problem. We never voted to assign or appoint an interim building commissioner, Mr. George Bridges or otherwise, one. And two, Mr. Bridges is in his role as Chief of Staff, the building commissioner reports to the Chief of Staff, so he will be working beneath his pay grade and being compensated for two, working two simultaneous jobs for the city. I've never heard of that, never. And, and then he'll be compensated for filling a, a lower rated position. So I don't know if the finance director or who can explain this, it's just quite confusing to me and I don't, I don't like it on the surface, so I'm asking for an explanation.
Chief or Sherry, whichever one.
I didn't quite understand the question, but all of you know me, my dedication, commitment, professionalism to this city. I have done nothing inappropriate, just want to make sure that that is said. I did express this during conversations with many of you and your support was definitely behind me requesting this through the mayor. So early four months ago, I did request compensation for the additional time that I am spending for the last 14 months easily doing the building commissioner role. And that she discussed, as I communicated with you all earlier, she communicated that with Human Resources, she considered it, she came back and she did approve that. Outstanding additional to the work that I performed for you and I hope that as many of you have said to me, that I have been very responsive, very productive in my role as Chief of Staff and amongst all the things that you have seen that I have been doing for you and our community as your building commissioner, not just payroll, not just evaluations, but also changing our workflows for our permits, business license, and other efficiencies that I've worked with one of your great teams, the Building Department. Outside of that, I did give you the opportunity to have a conversation with HR privately to discuss my personnel matters.
So as an officer of the city, the building commissioner is appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council, that never happened for you?
I did, I, you're absolutely right, sir, I did not.
Okay, so, thank you.
I didn't make mention to any...
And then for 14 months, for a year and a half, you've been working two roles and now you're asking for compensation for that? And as Chief of Staff, the building commissioner reports up to you, so you're going, you're asking to be paid for your role as Chief of Staff and a lesser role that you search for a new building commissioner and say, well, we're not even looking anymore. So you stopped looking for the guy, or girl, and now you're asking for compensation. I got to tell you, and I'm not going to belabor this and keep it all night, I'm just saying, regardless of our personal connections, George, I cannot in good conscience, I cannot vote for this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mayor?
Chief.
Yeah, I did, like I said, I did speak with many of you and Alderman didn't say anything that he didn't say previously when I did have the conversation with him, I think towards the end of last year. I never said that I was appointed to any position, so I want to make that very, very clear. And I went to the person that does have the authority at that time, it was the mayor. So I didn't assign or give authority to anyone, the mayor designated what she was going to do after her consideration.
I apologize. Staff, Chief, would you clarify who delegated the position to you?
The work to me is the mayor. Current mayor is the one that assigned me my roles and responsibilities day to day.
Alderman.
Thank you.
Hayes.
Alderman Newsom. Okay, so I would just point out a couple of things. Alderman Turner, I understand your position and I respect it. I don't, I think we all know that Chief of Staff Bridges has been acting as at least the head of the Building Department. We run all of those requests through him, he has communicated to us in writing that he is acting in that role and has done a terrific job. So it is not like we haven't known for the last 14 months that Chief of Staff Bridges took on this role. So for us to stand up here now and plead ignorance or say we didn't know or we can't approve this is just one point I want to raise. Another point I would raise is I don't know what the, what Commissioner Sellus was being paid before he left, but if he was being paid $100,000 a year, if that's the case, just as a base salary, that's $1,785.71 a week, if, if that's what he's being paid. Based on what Chief of Staff Bridges is requesting, after taxes, it comes out to $221.15 a week. So I would say however you come down on this issue, this, the city has made out. We have saved money, he's done a terrific job, the Building Department has cleared a backlog along with all the other terrific personnel within that department. So I think if we base this purely on numbers and unless somebody feels that they didn't know that Chief of Staff Bridges was acting in that role, by all means speak up. I think the, the right thing to do, and Alderman Turner's point is, is well taken, but the right thing to do is compensate him for his time. If you don't agree with that, I respect that, but I think if we just break it down into numbers, the role, what the city has saved, and how that department has operated, I would say very efficiently over this time, I think it's warranted.
That's irrelevant, those numbers are irrelevant. I mean, you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Alderman Guzman first and then Alderman Martinez.
I don't know about everybody else, but I've had a lot of issues on Lewis Avenue and the resident was complaining from day one and beforehand that it's gone through different Alderman, different administrations and other properties that I have emailed Chief Bridges as the building commissioner and it is being taken care of. So the Second Ward does agree with the fair compensation, $12,000 is, I mean, in comparison to an actual building commissioner hiring him, I mean, I think it's, it's oriented that he should receive the compensation. I mean, it's really nothing. Let's be honest. I, I mean, pushed code enforcement through multiple areas of mine by, by 12, 13, and 14 Street, got him cleaned up multiple times through code enforcement and different of my areas. It's just been huge. So I agree with it.
Alderman Martinez.
I, I will say that, I mean, as well as, you did a great job, I commend you for that, but you know, this administration based their stuff on transparency. The only thing I'm bothered is the simple fact that I never received an email, say, moving forward or as a temporary sign, you were going to take over that position. So I was taken back that you had got it and you know, you did a wonderful job, but you know, the simple fact is that, I mean, where was the transparency in this? Why, why wasn't, we all, we're sending emails for every little thing that we do, sometimes we got to send three or four emails, but the simple fact is that you were assigned, but I really didn't, didn't know about it until someone else mentioned it. I was wondering, when are we going to get a code enforcement, building commissioner? You know, you, you do deserve it, but I'm kind of bothered and set back the simple fact that this administration weren't transparent to us. And so they put us on the spot. And so now here we are deciding your, deciding whether you deserve it or not. So I just wanted to point that out there. Thank you.
Alderman Felix.
Yeah, I just want to say that, yeah, Chief of Staff Bridges has done a lot, in my ward especially, I mean, at least I can vouch for, for Chief of Staff. My parking lots, he, he helped me push it through. I had to work for it, but he helped me push it through by just telling me how things work and I asked a question, so. Um, by just telling me how things work, and I asked a question, so. You know, I've, I've been asking a lot of questions for the last year. That's why I've been getting, been able to get a lot of things done. I've been using rubber tools of order to make sure they get done, 'cause that's part of my job. So I would say, in terms of, uh, chief, I mean, I think it's well deserved. I'm not gonna sit here and say, uh, you know, that he doesn't. He has shown the work. Could things be a lot different? Could have been a lot different, yes. And that's why there's a change now, but chief has been put in the, in the middle and he's had, he's done his best to help us out, I would say. So I think he deserves it.
Alderman Bolton?
Yes, chief, I have to say, Bolley, now, our comments is not, I need to make it very clear, because we're intimidated or being bullied by anyone or forced to give him an increase, so I need to put that right out front. Chief of Staff, would you clarify for the audience, you're holding three roles. Am I correct?
Uh, not at this time. Uh, we do have a HR director. Our communications before was it's building commissioner and chief of staff.
Okay. And I have to acknowledge you are awesome, you're on the spot, you work above and overtime, and I know we got a new administration coming in. And I know you can't be denied. Um, you know, I was wavering about this because of the points that Alderman Turner pointed out. Is there some-
Everyone votes yes or no?
Okay.
Alden, Alderman Donahue?
Yeah, I just wanna say that, um, I probably speak to George Bridges or at least email him every day with a lot of things that I have going on in my ward. Um, the responsiveness of his, of him, uh, his departments call me back immediately. Things, I sent him something last night. He went out this morning on his way to work to take care of it. And he had other people contact me to get things taken care of. Um, I just wanna say, um, I'm glad you did it. And I'm glad you were able to lead them in a right direction and keep the code enforcement, you know, where it needs to be, and chief of staff also. So I just wanna thank you.
Final, Alderman Turner?
Thank you. So, I just wanna make this clear, George. I'm not attacking you. I agree with everyone, and you and I speak often early in the morning, 'cause we're both up early. You call me, I call you. So we're in contact. But all those comments about your expertise and your competence, I don't question that at all. But those things are irrelevant because the position, and this, this administration has made a habit, has ma- has set a pattern for ignoring the will of the council or subverting the will of the council. And then to your point, Alderman, uh, Martinez, the lack of transparency. Why not simply bring forth a, a motion to appoint the, an officer of the city? And I don't understand if you guys know what that means. We are all officers of the city, as are the chief of police, the chief of fire, chief, the building commissioner, and somebody else, still you, the corporate commission council, right? They're all, we are officers of the city. And for the mayor to us, assign us, George, as, as an officer in another role. He's doing one capacity as an officer of the city, chief of staff, that's the other guy. And now she appoints him to another without the approval of the council, and then we're supposed to compensate him? It, it just doesn't sit right with me. There's a reason why we have rules, regulations, laws, and ordinances. There's a reason why we have policies and procedures, and these things need to be adhered to. I represent the people of the sixth ward and by extension, the entire city, every taxpayer in this city. And I cannot, I cannot just ignore the, everything simply because I like George. That's not fair to anyone. It's not fair to you. And I vote no. Thank you.
Uh, roll call, please.
Okay, let me clear something up. Are we voting for it in its entirety, or is it being pulled, or what? Right now, it's for the whole thing?
Yeah, the only motion that was made was a first and second. Um, there has not been any motion to amend or anything. So as it stands, it is what is the payroll, including all line items, miscellaneous payroll for four, four, two, five.
Okay, I get, I get, I'd like to read it, 'cause I didn't read it because we pulled it out. Prove and ratify miscellaneous payroll, PD, HBB, and CT cash out, IAFF uniforms allowance, and stipends, ritual pay, and bonus pay, dated April fourth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and twelve cent. Roll call, please.
Madam, madam chair, I would like to pull out the specific line item related to Chief Bridges for a separate vote.
So that, that would be a motion to amend? Yeah, to, to amend, and that requires a second and then an approval of the body?
Don't we already have a first and second, though, on the original motion, so we should vote on that?
We do have an original motion.
A motion to amend is in order, when you have, when, when you have a, a motion up. So, but there's a first to, to amend, to pull out the, um, the line item for Chief of Staff Bridges, and you can ask if there's a second.
Is there a second to, to amend this motion and pull out that line item?
Motion to amend fails for lack of a second. That, you're back to the main motion.
We'll vote on the original motion. Item E. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Turner?
Because this motion includes that line item, I cannot vote for it. My vote is no.
Donahue?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, item five, item, item-
I just wanna say thank you, council. Thank you, team. I just wanna say thank you for all the hard work. I appreciate you all so much, and thank Mayor Ann Taylor for her-
Item five, reports and communications, we have none. Item six, old business. Item seven, new business, um-
We omnibus some of this, or?
I would like to take out B and D, and then we can omnibus everything else. Uh, can I get a motion first, though?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alder-
Let me make a comment?
Second by Alderman Marti-
Are we on new business, though? Okay. 'Cause I don't remember a vote. Okay, we did F. Okay. Um, so I'd like to pull up a couple of them.
Pulling out B and D as in dog.
Okay. And then I would like to include H, J, L, and M.
H, J, L, and M?
Yes.
Bolley, omnibus, can I make a statement?
Um, we already have a motion by Alderman Florian and Martinez. Um, Alderman Turner?
Yeah, I just wanna-
Just to the motion?
Thank you. I just, I mean, it's again, it's a, it's a point of procedure and, uh, inconsistency. I mean, there was, I think we talked about this before, Stuart, maybe you can cor- correct me. But it had previously been stated, and we'd operated under this policy for a long time, where things went to committee, and then two weeks later, they would go to council, and here everything on this, I believe, has went to committee. Maybe there's one or two. Anyway, everything, a lot of this is, is went to committee tonight, and it appears on the agenda for a full council right away. But what happened to the two-week delay?
Um-
I agree with Alderman Turner, and then they pick and choose what comes right away and what doesn't. Uh, what happened to the pine, and then what happened to, I mean, community development had like ten items. Um, G O N O had some items, and not all of them appear. So you cannot pick and choose. You either go all two weeks, or you do all the same night with a positive or negative recommendation.
I think it was only one item from G O N O.
You had tons in public works, you had tons in community development, and then you had some on G O N O?
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Four.
I don't think so. Excuse me?
Okay, we have, um, items B, D, H, J, L, and M that we're pulling out. We already have a motion on the floor by Alderman Florian and Alderman Martinez to omnibus. I'm going to start reading the other items. Item A, resolution approving four, five, seven, B, planned pricing enhancements for Empower and Nationwide. This matter was presented to the G O N O today, April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Item C, resolution ratifying the contract to award the low bid to Dyna- Dyna G through NYMEC membership. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee at the special meeting, April seventh. Item E, resolution approving a settlement and release of all claims for fire department workers' compensation claim, two, three, zero, eight, one, zero, W, zero, three, seven, for an amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and fourteen cent. This matter was presented to the Government Operations and Oversight Committee, April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Item F, resolution adopting the National Incident Management System. This matter was presented to the Government Operations and Oversight Committee on April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Item G, resolution approving the renewal of the insurance package as proposed by Alliant Insurance Services, Inc., for an amount not to exceed four million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. This matter was presented to the Government Operations and Oversight Committee, April seventh, twenty twenty- Item I, resolution approving the purchase of office furniture per section two dash four, five, eight, subsection I, three, joint purchasing with warehouse direct through Amnea Partners for an amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-six cent. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee at the special meeting on April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Item K, resolution authorizing the City of Waukegan to enter into an easement agreement and a release of recapture agreement for public utilities along River Road. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee at a special meeting on April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Item N, resolution approving the purchase of two twenty-twenty-four F-150 super crew cabs for the Police Department Truck Enforcement Unit. This matter was heard before the Community Development Committee on April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Item O, a resolution approving the purchase of S A W I I I, stat three, is that saw three? Status weight system for truck enforcement. Is that, that's for the weighing truck. Uh, this matter was heard before the Community Development Committee on April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, we go back to item B. Um, an ordinance increasing the number of Class A liquor tavern liquor license by one to Taku- Toluca Restaurant and Cantina Incorporated, fourteen fifteen Washington Street. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion on the floor?
Make the motion first?
Can I ask for a point of clarification quickly?
Yeah.
Uh, during the community development meeting, I had asked that the application be amended because there was a no on the nightclub endorsement uh, on the first page, and then I, I think it's on page seven of the application, the nightclub endorsement requesting such endorsement was filled out. So it was inconsistent. Uh, and for enforcement purposes, I think it has to be consistent. So, um, I would ask that the application be corrected and resubmitted. Uh, I thought that's what we had discussed with the applicant. Um, so I don't know if you wanna vote on it as amended, or if there, I mean, I think that we have to have the proper files at the city. We have to understand exactly what they're applying for.
We can always change them, just like we did with the, uh, Green Bay, uh, license that, we passed it and they made sure they changed it. I think, uh, finance can, we've done it many times.
Sure. I, I agree with you, and I think one of the other inconsistencies I pointed out was the hours of operation. I think that that was just an innocent error. I'm not saying the other one wasn't an innocent error. But she, uh, at one point, the applicant said, "There's no, we do not want a nightclub endorsement. It's just gonna be brunch and a sports bar." And then later on, she said, "We want a nightclub endorsement," and then it's inconsistent on the application. And I think if nothing else, we just owe it to everyone else out there who files these applications to make sure that they're correct when they're submitted.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they're gonna change it. Is there, where, is finance here? Is it something that we can just change like we've done before?
Let me ju- let me just look at the ordinance really quickly. I, I know exactly where you're going with this, and so just give me a moment here.
Chief Bridges?
Uh, absolutely. You can amend it now and approve it if the attorneys will allow that, and then we can change the paperwork per your amendment. They said that that was a simple mistake, and they would have checked that they do want the endorsement.
Who, who reviews those applications before they come to the council?
Our finance team does.
Thank you, sir.
So then I motion to make those changes as Hayes, uh-
The attorney is checking on the, um, the application first and the ordinance.
If I could ask you to indulge me, if you could go forward with some of the other items and return to this?
Okay.
Uh, let me just look through this. If you could move forward with some of the other items, and I'll get you an answer in a minute.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move to item D, the next one that was pulled out. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion?
Second.
Alderman Martinez, second.
Who was first?
And Alderman Martinez?
Thank you.
Item D, ordinance increasing the number of Class C retail package sales liquor license by one, Lake Liquors, twenty-two, thirty-three, North Lewis Avenue. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on April fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Should be April seventh.
Yeah, it should be, April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Amend that. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom?
Nay.
Turner?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Florian?
No.
Hayes?
I voted no on this previously during committee. I'm voting yes now. I've had an opportunity to talk to the owner, to Alderman Guzman's point earlier. Having an opportunity after committee, before this comes to council, to reconsider or think it through, or talk to the owners, or visit the sites, would be much appreciated. I don't like to add commentary in between the voting, but I just wanna make it clear that my vote is inconsistent, and that's the reason why I'm voting aye.
Bolton?
I too have spoke with the applicant, and they agreed they're gonna do the corrections that's needed. I also understand that I'm mayor, and staff have met at your, your establishment, so I definitely say aye.
I'm, I'm sorry, what is your vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Guzman?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Um-
I'm, I'm ready if you'd like to go back to-
Okay, we're gonna go back to item B.
Okay, so, thank, thank you for indulging me. I appreciate it. Oh, do we, do we not have a first and a- Okay, we still need a first and a second on this.
We have a, we have a first, uh, Alderman Felix, and a second, Alderman Turner, on item B.
Okay, so this is item B. This is the ordinance increasing the number of Class A, um, Class A tavern licenses by one for La Cantina, fourteen fifteen Washington Street. Um, the way the ordinance was drafted, it does not mention the nightclub endorsement. So if you would like to add that, um, you should have a motion to amend to add a nightclub endorsement. And then also, if you wanted to add a specific condition in line with what Alderman Hayes had requested, that the, um, the applicant basically clean up their application to reflect that they're asking for a nightclub endorsement and also making, what, what was the issue with the hours of operation, Alderman?
I believe there was an inconsistency on Thursday. They said they will only be open till eleven PM, but they'll be serving alcohol until one AM, something to that effect. I'm certain it was not intentional, but I just want the application to be correct.
And, and just a point of note, it, it wasn't that they want the endorsement, the nightclub endorsements, that they didn't want it, but they, on page seven, they added very- endorsements, that they didn't want it, but they, on page seven, they added verbiage about having it. That was inconsistent.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I got mixed answers when the applicant was up here and the application's inconsistent. So if we're adding the nightclub endorsement, I just want to make sure that the record's clear.
Yeah, I think that there was one box where it was checked no and one box where it was checked yes. Based on the, I'm not going to call it testimony, the comments that were made at the community development, the applicant indicated that they would be conducting events that are in line with what would require a nightclub endorsement.
I'll motion that verbatim as to how.
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
To add the nightclub endorsement.
And fix the hours.
The.
The hours of operation and then to resubmit an application even though we're going to vote on it tonight.
That details all that out.
Yes. May I get a second?
I'll second.
First and a second on the motion to amend. You'll need a roll call on that and then that, then if that. The first was Felix, the second was Guzman.
Okay, we're voting on the motion to amend to add those nightclub endorsements and the hours of operation. Roll call, please, on the amendment.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donna Worth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Okay, now we're going to vote on the actual ordinance, increasing the number, Class A Tavern Liquor License by One for Toluca Restaurant and Cantina, Inc., with the amendments. And I need a motion. Are we going to go back to the original motion, Alderman Felix and Alderman Turner?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to go back to the original ordinance.
I made the motion.
Oh, my motion?
Alderman Felix and Alderman Turner.
Yes.
This is to add the Class A.
Sorry, I stepped away. The amendment passed?
Yes.
Okay, so you'd be voting on the original motion as amended.
As amended, mhm.
Alderman Florian has a question.
Oh, you have a question? Somebody had a question? No? Alderman Florian?
Open those eyes in the back of your head. When we discussed this in committee, we made it very clear to the female that's now the owner, that she had to be the manager. But is it appropriate for us to make it clear to the previous applicant that he cannot be the manager of this establishment in spite of what his attorney said to us up here at the podium?
I, I think you might just have done that. So just to be clear, the, the liquor code, if I may, can make, let me just explain this. The, the liquor code has pretty stringent requirements who can actually be a licensee. And one of the issues is, is that you cannot have had a conviction for certain offenses. The prior applicant did have one of those and it was within the time period. The, the code also talks about a specific designated manager. And that doesn't mean the shift manager. It means who is designated as the manager, basically who is the operational person that we call when there's an issue. That person has to meet the same qualifications as a licensee under our code, which means that they are limited to the same issues. That does not mean that every single person who works there has to meet those qualifications. And that doesn't mean that the manager always has to be there. There can be a supervisory person, but the manager, who is basically the person who is operationally responsible, has to meet the same qualifications as the licensee themselves and can be the same person. The way that this license has been applied for now, it is the same person who is the licensee and the designated manager. That is the person who is operationally and to a large extent legally responsible for violations. But not every single person who works or every person who closes or opens has to meet that standard.
Is.
Alderman Guzman?
So some of the stuff that you said, is that state statute? Is that ordinance, Waukegan ordinance?
That, that's in our ordinance. And we, we have a pretty strict ordinance when, when I look at it compared to other, but that's also a result of that many liquor ordinances across the state are pretty old and they were written at a time when there was a lot of fear about corruption being attached to the sale of liquor. So you, some of these are literally like prohibition era, era or post prohibition era requirements.
Yeah, because I don't understand why, why would it matter if somebody has a DUI or not? I mean, it, it shouldn't matter if, to hold the liquor.
Can I, can I say something about that?
Alderman Newsome. Are you finished, Alderman Guzman?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Alderman Florian.
So I believe it's very important because when you have a liquor license, one of the things you have to do is not over serve your customers. And if you have a DUI, you have over served yourself and gotten in a vehicle and put hundreds, maybe more people at risk by driving drunk. So I think it's very important if you have a DUI on your record, that you not have a liquor license because you've already proved you'll over serve yourself. So what would stop you from over serving your customers? I mean, I don't see how you don't see there's a connection.
All right. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Turner.
Aye.
Donna Worth.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. All right. Item H, Resolution Approving Roadway Improvements on Thaxer Avenue by Morse Contracting Solutions, Inc., Per Section 2-458, Subsection I, Subsection 7, Good Faith Waiver for a Not to Exceed Amount of $125,000. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee at a Special Meeting on April 7th, 2025. Can I get a motion?
Actually, I'd like to put this on hold.
Is this something that can? Item H.
Second.
Can I speak to that?
Do I have a first and a second?
We didn't have a first and a second yet.
I'll first.
What? Alderman Florian?
Second.
Second by Alderman Hayes.
If we don't approve this, we're not going to get the price we're getting because there's, the contractor's already out there working. So I'm going to make a motion that we override the holdover because we need, we're not going to get the same price. It needs to be done. If we don't do it now, we're, we're not going to get the price, so.
I'll second.
The thing is, is okay, so if one street gets done and then another street is right adjacent to it, then why don't I get another street done that are connected to the other streets?
It may be useful to have, the city engineer just explained why this is a really unique case. This is, this is a very specific, this is not part of a normal road resurfacing.
Good afternoon, council. Alderman Guzman, to your question, a couple months ago, city council approved the vacation, part vacation of Thaxer Road. Thaxer Road itself was a very, very hard disrepair. Chris and I coordinating the previous extents for repair. Due to the vicinity and the location and the ongoing activities before council approved the vacation, it was not in the interest of the city to upkeep the road to current standards. We now have a property owner who has successfully vacated, vacated the road and is providing improvements to his property. So when I coordinated with Chris, you know, it is in our best interest to foster the ongoing economic development in that area. Historically, that area was very minimal work that was being done just due to the fact how it was developed. Now that we have a property owner that has spent their money fixing the road, vacating the road, there's a small section, the steel remains part of a road, which it's in dire need of replacement. The proposed replacement does account for the greater e-sales, which is for the higher loading that we will see along the road. So it will withstand years to come.
And, and just to be clear, Thaxer Road is a road that extends, or this portion extends north from Belvedere.
Yes.
And it, basically, there's a bunch of landlocked properties just from, north from Belvedere. The road is more or less gravel or dirt at this point. A private property owner has vacated, basically taken it over. And there is a stub between where the vacated part ends, the private property ends, and Belvedere Road. And we have some utilities under there that we need to take care of. They are, they're paving their part. They're paying for that part that they, that we vacated to them. They have a contractor out there. That contractor has offered to do the small part that remains for us, which I don't, I mean, how many square feet is it even?
Should be part of, six thousand square feet.
It's about 6,000 square feet, basically while they're mobilized out there. And that's why they're asking for a good faith waiver. This isn't a specific, this isn't part of like the road program. This is a very unique opportunity that allows those properties to no, to not be landlocked either. Because if they could pay, they could pave their new road and then they would still have basically a rutted out washboard, trying to get to Belvedere Road.
And exactly what Corporation Council Stu just said, why wasn't it attached to the roadwork program?
Why wasn't it attached to?
I, I don't think we knew what, that, when the private property owner was going to be doing their work. And so this is kind of, this is an opportunistic thing that needs to get done that came up. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. Chris and I, you know, we coordinate a lot of work around the city in that service line, private development when it comes to it. But to answer your question, why was that included in the road program? That was an unforeseen condition that we couldn't predict.
Alderman Martinez?
Yeah, I have a question. So this is for a newer business, correct? That wants the road. I mean, it, it seems that we said yes and then we went back and found some problems and now we need to fix them. That particular area, that road is very blighted. It just sits there, it has been here for, I've been here for 63 years in Waukegan. And so that area needs some kind of development. So first of all, I commend the person for even investing in that property and bringing money back into the community, has a new business. So I'm going to vote for it. I think that's the logical thing to do.
Are there any other questions? You, you, didn't you have, wanted to hold it over, Alderman Guzman? Are you removing that?
I can remove it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor, Alderman Florian and Alderman Hayes. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donna Worth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Item J, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 18 Pertaining to Addresses. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee at a Special Meeting on April 7th, 2025. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Could you press the button, protest mayor?
Alderman Florian and Alderman Martinez, are there any questions?
I do. I held it over. Okay, so I have no problem with the addresses. The problem I have is the fines, where it says it could be fined up to $750. That's the problem that I'm having, the fees. Because what was our fees beforehand? I think it was like 25 or 35.
Five dollars.
Five dollars?
It dates back to 1970.
But I, I think it should be fined something, but up to $750, I see.
I didn't see that.
One moment. We think that Corporation Council set that fine on that item.
Oh, okay. I don't think.
Okay. That was a suggested fine, Alderman. It can be amended here. I did not know what the fine was. I knew what the previous fine was. It was five dollars, 1978 or something like that. Yes, so I apologize. My understanding initially is that I thought this would have to go to adjudication and that they would issue it. But I just talked to Corporation Council and that was a suggested recommended fine of up to 250, $250. So it can be amended by you.
Up to $250.
That's what it's currently written as.
Per day, up to 250.
Okay, I thought it was.
I don't know.
Not per day.
It's a fine for if you do not have your business with your address on it.
Business or home.
Yeah, it applies to residences, one, yeah.
It's just, it's just commercial.
Oh, it's just commercial? Okay.
Well, I'd like to amend it then.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to amend to include residential.
I think everybody should have their address on their place because it helps out for fire and police.
Can, can we hold this over and talk a little bit more? We're, we're adding maybe lighting too, because it's hard for our police officers. Well, I don't know, what do you guys think? I mean, I don't know.
You can't add lighting to every single house and everything.
Chief.
Residential is already included within the ordinance and it has a different fee, fine schedule.
Okay.
Chapter 18 was just for a commercial, is my understanding.
Up to 250 was, the resident was two, 25?
Not up to 250.
The, sorry, I, I didn't, one of my associates worked on this. This is for house numbering. So this is for.
18 is for house, not commercial.
18 is for house.
Chapter 18. That's what I thought.
I think, I think it's desperately needed, police and fire and even public works, anybody who works in the city that goes to a certain house, it must be put on there. I agree with that. It just, when I was presenting it, I thought it said that adjudication made the determination of the dollar amount what would be fined for each instance. And it was up to 750. And I thought that number was way, way too high. And five dollars is way, way too low.
I just, Alderman Guzman, I tend to agree with you. The one issue I think we might have is mandating that it be on a house. Where does it have to be? Does it have to be lit? Can it be on a mailbox? Do you have to be able to see it from the street? I think that there, we might need some additional language to make sure that it's clear. So if, if we're going to go to that length, I think we should just take some time to consider it and work through the language rather than.
According, according to the ordinance, it states that any person who violates this division shall be subject to a penalty of $250 for each offense and a further penalty of $250 for every 30 days thereafter that they fail to comply.
Maybe we should hold it over?
I, I'm actually going to recommend, because I am looking at this right now. And if the, if the intention is that it would apply to not only residential, but also to commercial, our ordinance appears to be, if the intention is that all properties should be clearly marked with their number, we can, we could come back and, we could come back in two weeks with a better ordinance that addresses these issues.
Okay.
It was notated commercial in our notes. So we would absolutely appreciate if you did allow us to come back April 21st.
Okay, we'll hold Item J, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 18 Pertaining to Addresses. We'll hold that over till the next meeting.
I don't know that it's necessary to come back to a committee meeting either. I feel like it can come to the general council, right?
I agree with Alderman Hayes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Okay, Item L, Resolution Approving a Professional Service Agreement with Deegan Group for Environmental Services at 200 East Seahorse Drive, former Johnson Motor Site, OMC Plant. This matter was heard before the Community Development Committee on April 7th, 2025. Can I get a motion? So moved.
Second.
I understand that, and I agree with that, but there's only been a few suggestions, and nothing has moved forward. We've been at this for what, six, eight months? I need the fire in that to be moved forward.
If I may.
Where are we gonna get $70 million to build up?
Alderman Turner first, and then Alderman Florian.
Alderman Florian, I think we're on the same page again. So there is an idea to move the, create a new police station and move in there. However, you may recall, Alderman Guzman, the mayor's initial mention of funding was $60 million. Now it's up to $107 million. And that does not, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think that actually includes the purchase of the site. So we're not gonna build a police station unless we flow the bond, not in $107 million. I don't see it happening. But if, in any case, regardless, there's still gonna be several years down the road. Okay? So timeline sensitive. I think we give them a place to do what they gotta do, and we need to have that now, so...
Are you, did you wanna say anything, Alderman Florian? That's kind of exactly what I was gonna say. Okay. Okay, hold on, Alderman Martinez, and then Alderman Donaworth.
I don't have a question. Mine's more like common. I mean, these are police officers putting their lives on the line, and so they wanna feel safe, they wanna feel good. You know, we shouldn't be having second thoughts. This already should have been, again, you know, something like this should be, it should be a given. We want them to, to be healthy, and we want to know that we're on their side, and they can really feel like they're part of a team, you know? And, and then it comes with the ADA. It, you know, it's for to make it code, ADA accessible. So I'm kinda taking back the simple fact that we're debating whether we should renovate, make something better when, when we need to keep our, our troops safe and healthy. And so there shouldn't be a doubt that we, we're going back and forth. This is, this is a given. If, if, and we want them to, to produce and, and to deliver and, and be good police officers. I mean, I'm sorry.
All right.
It should be a given, it should be done. That's the point.
Alderman Donaworth?
Yeah, I just wanna say one thing. When I was hired in 1981, that bathroom was there, and it was an old bathroom at that point in time. And we definitely need a bathroom there, and for this amount of money, it'll be good. And that's, that's a place where a lot of people come, the public, you know, see the chief, or for training in the training room there. So it's, it should be done, and it should be done right.
Alderman Guzman?
All right, final comment. I agree with Alderman Martinez and Alderman Donaworth. I think it should be done, but I still, I need the fire in there to move this forward. I want you guys in a better position, okay? I want you guys in, in a better position. So if we can get that going, and then we could start working on the numbers, and then we'll figure out how to pay for this, then at least we could go from there. But something to move, some kind of action.
I just wanna say thank you all, and Alderman Guzman, I do appreciate it. One of the biggest issues that we're struggling with is current, a current litigation due to cases that have come up from 20 to 30 years ago, and, you know, the amounts of proposed settlements in them. And we're struggling with that, and how to proceed forward with this new department that we, you know, we strongly need. So thank you for your support.
Well, to, to answer that comment, okay, I understand what's coming, I understand what's out there. But at least come up and says, okay, here's, here's our idea. Here's how much it's gonna cost, and then go from there. At least have something prepared, ready on, hot on the fire, to say, okay, yes, we could do this, or no, we can't. But at least have something there, not just say, well, you know what, we're waiting, and then we'll find out when. So while you're waiting, let's do this, this job and get this done. And then when we're get to the point and said yes or no, or half or whatever, at least we're in a stepping forward. So you could say, yeah, once they say yes, okay, we got everything ready. It's already planned out, everything is picked out.
Yes, sir. My drive's, my drive's right behind you, sir. Thank you, absolutely.
All right, Item M, we have a motion on the floor, Alderman Florian and Alderman Bolton, roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donaworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item 8, Ordnances. We have non-closing items, Alderman time.
Alderman Newsom.
You, Madam Clerk. Just a reminder of Earth Week for the 5th Ward, Wednesday, April 23rd, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The dumpster will be at Greenwood and Delaware. And if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call at 847-390-2691. And it will be Earth Week in all the wards that week, starting April 21st, I believe. So you can go anywhere in the city, in any of the wards, whichever day that you need to clean up. And also, just a reminder of what I read earlier, Monday, starting Monday, April 21st, 2025, going through for two weeks, take advantage of putting out your residential yard waste bags. You do not have to put any stickers on them. You put them out, they cannot weigh more than 50 pounds, and they cannot be of sod or dirt or artificial Christmas trees or any other, other things that I read off earlier. If you have any questions about what you can put out, please call LRS at 844-633-3577. Put out your yard waste bags. You have two weeks to do that, from the 21st to the end of the month. Take advantage of that. Thank you, that's all I have.
Alderman Donna, Alderman Turner.
Thank you, thank you very much. Excuse me, so since it was mentioned, you know, this police station, you guys, some of you may remember, it was right about a year ago, I had a handshake deal for the Nasco Building for 1.2 million dollars to that. That was gonna be the new police station. They poo-pooed on that and didn't want it. And then I had another handshake deal for the Ramada Inn, which the building was in great shape, and, and then they didn't want that, so they forced a guy to tear it down. And it has just been a lot of confusion. I'm really glad we're getting a new administration. Right, Chief Bridges, look, man, you've done an excellent and exceptional job, and don't, please don't misconstrue my earlier statements, because it's not a tack on you personally or professionally, it's simply a matter, as I stated, I think in doing the right thing. And, and, but you've done a good job, George, and it's been, it's been a pleasure to work with you. Say the same for Corporation Council. You and the team, Stuart, I know we've had some disagreements, different positioning on ver- on a number of things, but, you know, we are not here to agree with each other on every issue. And I really have enjoyed our, our interactions and intellectual discussions, and, and I've learned a lot from you. So thank you very much. Alderman Newsom just stated about the Earth Week and the dumpster in Ward 5. It's the same thing in Ward 6 on April 23rd, from 8 to 3:00 PM. Mine will be on Hickory Street, underneath the power lines, and so that will be right about Hickory and Keith. And I will be out there on hand to assist. Haven't had a ward meeting in a little while, I think I'm gonna set one up. I'll try to get it done scheduled by the end of this month. Don't hold me to that, but it's, it's coming and coming soon. And then the, also in the 6th Ward, excuse me, we're already seeing several car burglaries and attempted burglaries. And over the weekend, I sat out twice, running, sitting in my car, trying to see if I could see the guy. We do have video of him, police reports have been made. And I just caution everyone, lock your vehicles. And also, lesson learned, pay attention to your dogs. My dogs get up at 2, 3:00 in the morning, and they're barking at nothing. Well, they're, they're not barking at nothing, they're barking at something. And two times, it's been that guy. Says, yeah, the one time he went in my, came in my driveway and in my garage, got in my truck, and then went in the garage and went and got in my wife's car. Dogs were barking, and I said, shut up, stupid dog. And there you go, so, all right? Pay attention to what's going on, lock your vehicles, remove your valuables, and report suspicious activity. And I know sometimes we say, well, the police never come. Well, they're busy, and it is a lower priority, we have to acknowledge that. But still, we wanna bring it to attention, it's documented, and hopefully, one day, we'll catch them in the act. Thank you.
Alderman Donaworth?
Yeah, just like Alderman Turner said, you lock your vehicles. That's, that's the biggest deterrent, because for a while there, they were going around and breaking windows of the cars that they couldn't get in. But the problem there was they saw something that, that they wanted, like a laptop, or people leave money in their, in their cup holders and stuff like that. So an ounce of prevention will, will help a lot. My collection day is April 24th, at Bowen Park, Sheridan and Greenwood. And I should be there, and I can help, and we'll do whatever we gotta do. And then just, like everyone said, keep your eyes open, and if you hear something or see something, you know, give the police a call and stay safe. Yep, I'm gonna be doing an up and coming ward meeting, but I just haven't figured out what date.
Is that it, sir? Alderman Florian?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Saturday night, I had the pleasure of representing the city at the Boys and Girls Club of Lake County Gala in Lake Forest, and we were presented with this youth advocate award, so I'm hoping I can give this to our PR department. It's presented to the City of Waukegan for your instrumental support of club initiatives providing bright futures to, bright futures to youth in our community for generations to come. It was a great event. They had three young people give speeches, and they were just amazing. It was so adorable, talking about the programs and how much the Boys and Girls Club affected their lives and impacted their lives, and it, it was amazing. So next year, I encourage more people to attend it. My dumpster is on Thursday, the 24th, at Beaver Park. And that same day, besides it being the Alderman, the 7th Ward Alderman's, is the longtime CEO of United Way of Lake County. And that afternoon, they're gonna be celebrating her retirement, she's moving away to Arizona. And it's at the Eleanor Murky Center that afternoon. I know Alderman Newsom did a great job talking about all the Earth Week events, but I think one that was left off is Saturday, the 26th, Christian Neighbors is doing a cleanup, and they, this has grown every year that they've done this, they're up to about 250 volunteers now, which is amazing. And they do several parts of the city, so if anyone's available, I think they start at like 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning. But you could reach out to me if you want more information about their cleanup on Saturday, the 26th. Thank you.
Alderman Hayes?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want a minute, a comment about our vote tonight on the La Cantina application. I think, or I know, what we did is we effectively published a roadmap for how to circumvent our ordinances. We accepted an application from an individual who was not able to have a liquor license, and then that application was blatantly withdrawn, and his wife was then put on the, the application. So the message that we're sending to everyone in the community is, if you can't get it one way, then just put someone else's name on the application and get it another way. I believe that the city council is smart enough to see through that, and given Alderman Guzman's prior comments about enforcement, strict enforcement on violations of, liquor license violations or business license violations, as the case may be, I'm surprised it passed. As I mentioned earlier, Alderman Felix is one of the individuals that we're grateful that he did this, brought the violation at, to Lucas, to everyone's attention. So I, I don't know why we then turned around and passed this after we were told that it was gonna be one individual, and then he couldn't apply, and then we allowed his wife to apply. It seems like it's an end run around our ordinance, and what we're seeing, I've said this a few times now, is that we're becoming a city of carve-outs. We make laws, we enforce laws, but every time we one-off someone or make an exception for someone else, we are weakening the laws that are on our books, and we're discrediting our ability to enforce those laws. So I, I'm seeing this as happening much more frequently, I, I don't think it should happen at all, but it's happening very frequently, and I think it's gonna, it's gonna backfire on us. So I just want everyone to be aware of this. We have to think about the city as a whole, and the people who may come before us on, in similar instances, and we will be compelled to, to, you know, in effect, vote the same way that we did tonight, because we've approved it one time, so what's our basis gonna be for not approving it another time? So it's a dangerous precedent. I'm not trying to lecture anyone, I'm just saying that it's a red flag for me, it's a concern, I think we need to worry about it going forward. And when we make these decisions, it's not just about one constituent, it's not about one ward, it's not about one business, it's about the city as a whole, and we have to think more globally than just trying to help somebody out of a jam, cause that's not what we're up here to do. So that's, that's my piece on that. So thank you for hearing me out. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton?
Yes, thank you. As a reminder, the 1st Ward will have their cleanup on January 21st. The location will be 8th and Adams. I will be out there, and if you want to have any questions about the 1st Ward, I will definitely be on site. And also, as mentioned, this is not just for the 1st Ward. So the time, once again, will be 8 to, I believe, 3:00 PM, at the location of Adams and 8th. And in response to the comment and reference about McAllister being repaved, is definitely under scheduled. So take note, that will not be neglected, and it's not, I'm not blind to that. Matter of fact, one of the patches is right in front of my house, so that definitely will be attended to. Also, I want to acknowledge Uma, who has been, which is Harvest Market on 10th Street, has been feeding hundreds every week, and I just wanted to salute them, and I'm excited and then that application was blatantly withdrawn, and his wife was then put on the application. So the message that we're sending to everyone in the community is, if you can't get it one way, then just put someone else's name on the application and get it another way. I believe that the City Council is smart enough to see through that, and given Alderman Guzman's prior comments about enforcement, strict enforcement on violations of liquor license violations or business license violations, as the case may be, I'm surprised it passed, as I mentioned earlier, Alderman Felix is one of the individuals that we're grateful that he did this, brought the violation at Toluca's to everyone's attention. So I, I don't know why we then turned around and passed this after we were told that it was gonna be one individual, and then he couldn't apply, and then we allowed his wife to apply. It seems like it's an end run around our ordinance, and what we're seeing, I've said this a few times now, is that we're becoming a city of carve-outs. We make laws, we enforce laws, but every time we one-off someone or make an exception for someone else, we are weakening the laws that are on our books, and we're discrediting our ability to enforce those laws. So I, I'm seeing this as happening much more frequently, I, I don't think it should happen at all, but it's happening very frequently, and I think it's gonna, it's gonna backfire on us. So I just want everyone to be aware of this, we have to think about the city as a whole and the people who may come before us on, in similar instances, and we will be compelled to, to, you know, in effect, vote the same way that we did tonight, because we've approved it one time, so what's our basis gonna be for not approving it another time? So it's a dangerous precedent, I'm not trying to lecture anyone, I'm just saying that it's a red flag for me, it's a concern, I think we need to worry about it going forward, and when we make these decisions, it's not just about one constituent, it's not about one ward, it's not about one business, it's about the city as a whole, and we have to think more globally than just trying to help somebody out of a jam, because that's not what we're up here to do. So that's, that's my piece on that, so thank you for hearing me out, that's all I have, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, thank you. As a reminder, the First Ward will have their cleanup on January twenty first. The location will be Eighth and Adams, I will be out there, and if you have any questions about the First Ward, I will definitely be on site, and also, as mentioned, this is not just for the First Ward. So the time, once again, will be eight to, I believe, three P M., at the location of Adams and Eighth. And in response to the comment and reference about McAllister being repaved, is definitely on the schedule. So take note, that will not be neglected, and it's not, I'm not blind to that, as a matter of fact, one of the patches is right in front of my house, so that definitely will be attended to. Also, I want to acknowledge Uma, who has been, which is Harvest Market on Tenth Street, has been feeding hundreds every week, and I just wanted to salute them, and I'm excited about their new development that's coming, new developments program to enhance and empower our residents, and they don't just feed the First Ward, they feed a little of everyone from all over the city. And I attended this week, April third, the promotion and ceremony of our commanders and sergeants, I just want to give you a shout out and say congratulations, it was an excellent event here at the chambers. And I want to announce youth that are looking for a job. You, they are looking for youth from ages sixteen to twenty-four, in and out of school youth are welcome, and they're looking to hire you, give you life skills and training, and the number that you can call is seven seven three, and the program is called harvestforyouth.org. Seven seven three eight one five five two two seven. The number again, seven seven three eight one five five two two seven. Also, I attended, the city, they put on a solar, Illinois Solar For All. The objective of the event, to help us as residents, to speak on solar energy source for our community as well as residents, and it was a wonderful event. So if you have questions about saving solar panels, saving on your utility bills, the number for that is eight 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 nine seven seven, excuse me, eight 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 nine seven zero four seven three two. And that's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Guzman.
Good evening, I wanted to just say, I'm, I had my ward meeting with a section of my constituents and residents, and about twenty-something people showed up, about another five or eight called me up, and I want to let the Second Ward know that I will be, I have already put a motion in to reopen Willow Road. I did it democratically, I sent out a total, I had three meetings. I sent out a total of six hundred flyers, and I said it multiple times, right here on council floor, that the main reason is for the reopening or closing of Willow Road. Out of all the, everybody who showed up or everybody called, only about two people, three residents, and I counted as their votes because they called me up, and I said, "Yeah, I'd count you as your votes as you didn't want it done." So that's why I'm saying, it was three out of everybody that was in there, so I already put a motion in there to reopen that street up, but I did, I did tell them there was gonna be conditions, it's not gonna be reopened as it was before. I already spoke to Public Works Director Chris Garland about dotted lines to make sure that people know it is a two, when it, when it reopens, it is a two-way. The hill on Willow Road is really, it's, it's a, it's a barrier of sight, so I am asking for oval mirrors on the top, so people can look who's coming, to make sure they're not on the wrong side of the street or anything like that, and I'm also gonna be asking for a camera, another camera, to, to prevent, because the main reasons were dumping and stuff like that, and I'm gonna be also asking for speed bumps, because another one was about the speeding and racing down that road, because I guess people like to go over the hill and feel like they're Dukes of Hazzards or something like that. So hopefully, that takes care of that. I'm doing my ward meetings by sections, because obviously, I don't have three, four thousand, five thousand flyers to go around and time to go through every one, so I'm gonna be trying to do them every two to three weeks. So my next meeting is April nineteenth, from four to six P M., English, and six to seven P M., Spanish, same thing at my house, to discuss what's going on in the ward and how we're gonna move this forward, so it's gonna go by sections, okay? So I could do a little bit at a time. The weight station, I'm very happy that that's going on, I guess it was in the eighties or something like that, and I suggested it to, during, I think it was an Alderman briefing about that, it came up because of the heavy vehicles that were down in the Fourth Ward, and I, I see them troubling all the time, since I'm all over the county, on how these, these truckers just try to avoid the scale, so I'm, I'm very happy about it. Earth Week dumpster, remind everybody, the First and Second Ward are having Monday, April twenty first, twenty twenty five, eight A M. to three P M. Please join us, again, you can go to any dumpster, any date of the week, so you don't have to just go to, to mine. You can go on any single one, so it's in the city website, and then when they're having, so please pay attention, so you don't have to just go to ours, it's just, you can hop around if you want, but ours is basically the twenty first, first and second. It's gonna be on Doug Dale and Benny. Unfortunately, it couldn't be done in the, over there in the parking lot, because they're doing construction in the park, but we got it real close, it's only two blocks down, but it's still on Doug Dale, okay, guys? Let's be careful out there, kids are still in session, with the stop signs going around. I think a week or two ago, I saw somebody going around them, and I was yelling at them, I was like, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, calm down, I'm not a police officer." But I didn't care for that, because there could have been a child crossing in front or in the rear, so please wait until the stop sign is fully retracted, so, and the bus is moving along before you go. Congratulations to the Bulldogs basketball team, I didn't get a chance to go over there and see it. I know my son want, wanted to go, but the tickets were sold out at the time, but congratulations for getting that far. And I think that's about it, thank you very much, have a good night.
Alderman Martinez.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk and Council. First again, I also would like to congratulate Waukegan High School on their regional championship. That whole, that whole time was, it was, it was a time where the city actually got together, and we were cheering on for, for one cause, and that's, it was something that's good to see that everyone was, was participating, but again, I congratulate them on their success. And just a reminder that our, that the Third Ward Earth Day will be on Tuesday, April the twenty second, from eight A M. to three P M. It is open to all residents, you don't have to be a Third Ward resident. It is gonna be located at Whitefield on Lewis Avenue. Please know what items not to bring, please reach out to me if you have any questions with that. Also, I'd like to talk about, briefly about the much anticipated street work that is, continues in my ward. This includes the sidewalk, the curves and other road repaving. Those roads that are in quest, that are getting addressed are Leith Avenue from Brookside to Grand Avenue, also being addressed at North Elmore from Monroe to Brookside Avenue, and finally, North Metropolitan Avenue to Grant Avenue. And I do want to thank Chris Garland, amazing staff, there's so much going on in the Third Ward, it keeps me busy. I enjoy riding around and seeing the, you know, people putting a lot of work and effort into it, so I appreciate that, all the work you guys do and continue to do for our ward. Also, just, let me hear, kinda messed up here. Our Third, oh, our Third Ward Community Meeting is tentatively gonna be scheduled for Saturday, May the seventeenth, from eleven to one P M., and this will be at the Brookside Campus at twenty-three, twenty-five Brookside Avenue and the cafeteria. There will be more information forthcoming, and I will also share that with my constituents, so please keep that in mind, but right now, I'm just working all the kinks to get that, to get that organized. There will be, I'm hoping I get department heads to participate and, and give, give us a report on what's going on, whether it be public works, whether it be coin enforcement, whether it be the Chief of Police. All hands down, and I hope that everyone will be there to, to be there at the meeting and experiencing to my constituents. There will be light refreshments, and also a dessert bar will be offered. And then also, just want to briefly talk about the rain season that is upon us. Please make sure that you check your cell pumps, make sure it's operable, there's been a lot of flooded basements, and also, outside, please, if you're, if you're able, please clear the sewer drains that stand right in front of your home. Just a simple sweep, you know, or maybe just clean it as you can, I'm not, I'm not, advocate and say, "Go ahead," you know, I'm not mandated for you to do it, but it does help the city, and it also helps us unclog those sewer drains, so. It can also avoid a lot of the flooding, too. Let me see here, quickly, quickly, I also attended a few community events. I attended the National Kidney Foundation hosted, excuse me, a health fair hosted by the National Kidney Foundation. The theme was to prevent, educate, and empower. This event offered free screenings and other essential, essential services for the underserved in our community. Another event that I also attended was a Zion Health Fair, and that was also conducted at the Zion Public Library, another great informative event which is much needed in our community. Finally, congratulations to all the winners in the most recent elections. I look forward to working with the new administration. George Bridges, my friend, you did a stellar job, you know, you helped me so much, you know, and to show you how much I appreciate that, I also want to bring up the fact that at one time, I wasn't feeling well, and I was almost undecided if I wanted to go to the hospital, but I didn't end up going to the hospital, but what I, what I did see is that Mr. Bridges did come, and he, he came out of his busy schedule, and he did bring me some soup. And so that's, that's, that's out of the box, and I, and I, and so I, I thank you for that. You didn't have to do that, but you did that, and it, it shows the character that you have. Wherever you do in life, you will always be successful, keep that trend up, and I commend you for all your helping, again, I want to thank you. Also want to thank also Corporate Council, great job. Every time that I, I heard you speak, or every time I left, I, I left away more informative and also smarter. So you guys also did a great job, and I commend you, and, you know, unfortunately, there, there had to be a loser, you know, but you guys, all Petrosales in the pat for the extraordinary job you guys did. You guys really provided a lot of service for the city, and I'm glad to be part of that team. So again, thank you all for, for all your efforts, and I wish you all well. If you need to get ahold of me, I can reach that eight four seven three nine zero two six eight nine. Again, I ask that you be safe, you be mindful, but let's all be a good neighbor, thank you and good night.
Alderman Felix.
I want to say, to address Alderman Hayes, honestly, you know, you keep saying that, you know, we're providing a roadmap, you literally provided the roadmap as you were explaining the roadmap, the reason why we have a roadmap. You're, you're bringing it up, you're saying it, you're, you're, you're the one who's providing the roadmap. I'm just trying to help people out. They closed down because I made sure, like, they need to have all of their stuff right, and I told them, you know, you guys need to get your stuff right. I told them, that's the reason why they were closed down. And then, but also, I'm not just, "You're done, let me help you get to where you need to be and open up a business." They have a family, I've sat down with them, and with their kids running around, so I'm all for helping people out, and if I can, of course, and we can do it the right way, which our lawyers were involved, Chief of Staff was involved, the professionals, the experts were involved, so I don't see how, how you paint it in that way, and that you shouldn't. But I will commend you, I do appreciate you, because you make me a better Alderman, honestly. Our, you know, debates here helps me become a better Alderman, so I do appreciate that. The City of carve-outs, you know, that's, I don't understand why you would say that. The, the road that we, we voted on today, we said, "You know what, we're gonna lose money if we're gonna do this." That was in the Ninth Ward. The last time we heard that was that big road that we did, guess where that was? In the Ninth Ward, no bid contract, you know, and we just did it, did it because we're saving money. City of carve-outs, you're calling me out for that? Come on now, you know, that's, that's not fair. I wouldn't call you out for that, but here you are, so, you know, but in a lot of respect, I try not to. But with that being said, Chief Bridges has helped me out a lot in my team, like he's, Mark was saying that she's my, he's my mentor, he is a very knowledgeable person, he's been around, he's, he tries to help out. He's been put in the middle, and it's unfortunate, but, you know, he's helped me out, and he's been helping me out with things that we can do right in our city, so it's hard to say no if it's the right thing. So I really appreciate Chief of, Chief of Staff Bridges, and also, one thing he tried to do is keep his staff away from politics, and I appreciate that as well. The, the Fourth Ward, we're gonna have the Fourth Ward Collection as well. It's gonna be this time in a different place, I'm proud that it's gonna be in a different place, it's gonna be on Butrick and Washington. We usually have it on Water Street, but Butrick and Washington, we'll see how it goes. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of people come in, it's more ward, so, you know, it's a little tighter than before, but hopefully, we have a good turnout over there, so I encourage everyone to go, it's gonna be April twenty second, eight A M. to three P M., the day after the second meeting in, in April. I do want to say, congratulations to new mayor Sam Cunningham. You know, I sit down with, you know, I, I sit down with everyone if they're willing to, and, you know, we have a lot of good things coming our way. One thing I did express, and he has also expressed, he wants to fix Washington, and I think that's gonna be a huge thing that, you know, hopefully, he'll go over the details soon, but I'm excited about that, and I'm excited to be aligned with, with the administration. So with that being said, thank you guys for voting for a business in my ward, and any business that needs help, please reach out to me, thank you.
All right, that is it for Alderman time, item ten, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Donaworth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, Donaworth.